And we are live on YouTube.
Thank you.
We're ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, this is a call to order of a special meeting of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Today is Thursday, October 1st, 2020. The time is noted as being 5:02 PM. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Yes, one second. All right, Ms. Allen. Mr. Benahan.
Here.
Mr. Lombard. Ms. Martinez. Mr. Sokolovick.
Present.
Mr. Taylor. Mr. Ellingsworth.
Present.
Mr. Weldon.
Present.
Bobby Brown, present.
Okay, we have a quorum. I'll note for the record that there are three members of staff here this evening, four members of staff, rather. Superintendent Michael Testani, Chief Financial Officer Marlene Segal, from Finance Office Liz Maurer, and Director of Food and Nutrition Services John Garrity. And we also have John McLeod, our stenographer. So the first item on the agenda is discussion approval of FY 2020/2021 budget. This item was presented last week through the Finance Committee. I don't know if you have anything you want to say about that, Mr. Sokolovick, or if you want to just defer to Ms. Segal?
I'll definitely defer to Ms. Segal, our expert.
Okay. Ms. Segal, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening to everyone. This evening, I will describe briefly the 2020-21 Budget Gap Plan, which is on the screen. And this plan, as you indicated, was presented in detail to the Finance Committee on September 23rd. The plan illustrates that the district ended the 2019-20 fiscal year with a surplus and opened the 2020-21 fiscal year with a structurally balanced budget. In this plan, at the bottom, there is a table, which I'm scrolling to, relevant to 2019-20, showing the net effect of debits plus credits, or net savings. And at the bottom of the table, you will see that the surplus was approximately $6.7 million. And that amount has been dropped into the 2020-21 plan. Therefore, as I scroll back up to the top of the 2021 Budget Gap Plan, you will see that we began the development of the plan with a monetary need of $14.5 million. In the first section of the plan for 2021, the revenue, budget adjustments, and savings, including the 2019-20 surplus that I just mentioned, and which is tabulated in the table at the bottom, are indicated. And as I scroll down through this top section, labeled revenue and savings, it also includes, as I mentioned, various adjustments and expenses. The bottom line before we apply additional actions is a shortfall of about $2 million. We subsequently covered that shortfall, and I will show you the bottom line in a moment. I just wanted to make a few comments about revenue and savings. The Alliance ECS addition was approximately $2.3 million. This was approximately $500,000 lower than we originally anticipated. Excuse me. We did have a priority grant allocation with a net increase of about $58,000 across the three components of the priority grant, so that was a positive development. And the city contributions were approximately $3.2 million comprised of the three components that are listed. Now, in the plan, we dropped in, as I mentioned, on this line, line 52, item 7, we dropped in the 2019-20 surplus that is documented in the table that I showed you at the start. Now, we eliminate this $2 million shortfall with a series of gap resolution actions. And I believe all of these actions have been discussed with and presented to the board prior to the summer. These actions include deficit prevention mode, which I've explained many times in the past, and a series of actions that we take every year in one form or another in order to introduce operational efficiency and generate savings. And after taking into account all of those actions, we land with a surplus of about $3.4 million. And here, I'm using surplus within the context of a projection, a projection now that we're in 2021. And so we have a structurally balanced budget in 2021. There are many variables that will impact on that budget as we move through the year. And we will be monitoring the budget continuously, as we always do. In our projected plan, we have $3.4 million than we need at this time. Hopefully, as we move through the year, we will not need the $3.4 million, and we'll be able to apply it to the 21-22 budget. So the $3.4 million is on reserve, and we are cautiously optimistic that those funds will remain on reserve and will be available to apply to the 21-22 budget. Before I conclude, I would just add that in 1920, at the end of 1920, at the close, in food and nutrition, we did successfully turn a projected shortfall into a surplus. And we were very pleased that we ended the year through adherence to strict fiscal controls and prudent expenditures with a surplus of approximately $900,000. We have included in this plan a potential liability of $200,000, which may or may not materialize, and that pertains to potential payments to personnel in 1920 during the school closure. So once again, that liability may or may not materialize. We built it into the plan in order to ensure that we have the funds if needed. And so in closing, this is the plan for a structurally balanced budget in 2020-21. We're cautiously optimistic that we're going to be able to maintain the current projected surplus of $3.4 million, which is currently on reserve, and we're cautiously optimistic that as we move through the year, we will generate additional savings that will further help to support a balanced budget in 21-22. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Segal. Just want to note for the record that a few other people have joined the meeting. Executive Directors, Dr. Melissa Jenkins, Hermine Oplanas, and Dr. Victor Black from the staff are also here. I think that's everyone. I don't think I've missed anyone. So I'm gonna just kind of open it up to the floor for questions. I'll go down the list and see if anyone has a question. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions regarding the budget?
Nope, I believe my only question was, well, I'll state it in this meeting as well. There was two concerns for me, well, worries, were the nurses, which is what Ms. Segal explained in our meeting about where, how are we doing better with recruiting, making sure students are being able to receive nurses, whatever the budget may represent for that. And then, just for clarity's sake, there was a lot of confusion online about the budget, about how much money that the Board of Ed was, basically had, and how we weren't using it properly. So Ms. Segal and the rest of the team basically broke it down so that if anyone was confused as to what that would look like, we were better able to explain it, be it that they were talking about COVID money. So that's pretty much it. I just want to reiterate what I asked them at our meeting prior to this one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Benahan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have no question, but I'm very glad that Ms. Segal cleared everything so people they can know how on board vacation is spending the money. So any questions or any concerns, they can check how we spend the money so nobody can say we are not spending the money the way it is. The only thing I'm waiting for Ms. Segal is, when she told me she will send me the information about Title I and the budget, PDA, so it's the only thing I'm waiting for. But no questions here, here, thank you.
The chart on grants, specifically a historical summary of major grant appropriations, that will be shared with the Finance Committee at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Segal.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Ellingsworth, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one real quick. It's a comment as well. I thought at one time, we were not allowed to carry over funds into another school year. What has changed and when?
Yeah. The funds have been placed primarily in the Internal Service Fund. We also moved some money into Title I as part of our Title I carryover. The exact distribution is at the bottom of the chart. We were able to work with the city through Ken Plato, who is the Director of Finance and Chief Financial Officer for the city, to move the surplus funds into the Internal Service Fund, specifically the Board of Ed Internal Service Fund.
Right, and then be able to pull it out.
So it is, I want to continue to emphasize, it is our fund, the Board of Ed Internal Service Fund, and we monitor it carefully. And we have those funds deposited in the Internal Service Fund. Of course, we also have to ensure that the Internal Service Fund balances every year. And we've been fortunate in that, after the introduction of the Connecticut Partnership in 1819, which brought us into an insured condition for health insurance as opposed to self-insured, we've been fortunate in that we've been able to pay the IBNR that I had discussed with the board several years ago.
Yeah.
And balance the ISF each year and usually run a surplus. It may be a small surplus, but a surplus is always better, obviously, than a shortfall. And so we have to make certain that the ISF is balanced. We're remaining optimistic that it will balance through the various deposits that are made for the employer and employee premium core share contributions, as well as the money that we deposit for the retirees and workers' compensation. So we're hopeful it will stay balanced, and the funds that we have deposited on reserve from the end-of-year 2019-20 surplus will remain on reserve until we need the funds to balance an operating budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And last, Mr. Sokolovick, any questions?
Yes, one question. Ms. Segal, I'm gonna ask you a question. It's not meant to be insulting, but basically, we're all laypeople here, and we're taking your word for all these numbers. Is there anybody who checks your work to ensure accuracy and fidelity of the numbers, such as an auditor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the full question.
Yes, he's inquiring about the involvement of a professional auditor with respect to our finances. Thank you.
Well, we're audited every year by Blum Shapiro.
Right.
And in fact, Blum Shapiro is currently engaged in the final work of the 1920 audit. And as you know, we filed the state EFS. EFS means Education Finance System Reports on the due date of September 1st. Liz, who is our Manager of Budget and Financial Reporting, manages that task, and she filed those reports and superintendent certified them. And now the auditors are involved in the final stage of the audit of those reports, because those reports initially are labeled unaudited. And on December 31st, the audit will be officially completed, and final reports will be submitted. So in summary, we're audited every year, and the auditors review procurement transactions, they review payroll transactions, they review budgetary information, and a whole range of various financial transactions.
Okay, Ms. Segal, another question. When was the last time our books were audited and a major discrepancy was discovered or proven?
Never, never.
So we've never, in all the years, never?
I never.
Okay, so I just want that emphasized. Our audited books have never been found to be in wanting. Thank you.
We do not, Liz is absolutely correct. We do not recall any major discrepancies.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Mr. Testani, do you have any closing remarks on this topic?
Well, I do, because I think it's important to mention, because by the questions and some of the commentary by certain board members, I think it's worth saying that the only reason we ended up with a surplus is because we were closed.
Right.
To successfully negotiate a reduction in our payments with our transportation contract and whatever other savings that were realized from not being open. Had we not experienced a pandemic of the magnitude that we had and had to close schools and were ordered to close schools, it would have been a balanced budget at the end of the year. And it would have taken all of our savings measures, our fiscal responsibility that we continually, continually practice. Marlene and her team is great about maintaining and being very cautious in keeping everyone fiscally responsible. So I think it's worth noting that, had we not closed because of a pandemic, it would have been another tight year in ending the school year with a balanced budget. So the actions of other folks on social media and/or in other areas of government questioning, the Board of Ed's surplus is, to me, obviously, it's common sense why we had some savings. But this is not because we're hiding money. This is not because we're trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. This is because we were ordered to close our buildings on March 12th. So I just think it's worth noting that, on the record, that Bridgeport Public Schools is still underfunded. Bridgeport Public Schools still needs additional funding sources as we move forward if we're going to be able to provide high-quality service to the students in the Bridgeport community.
Okay, and kind of piggybacking on that, I would just note that $6 million surplus equates to roughly 2.5% of the budget. So in the bigger picture, it's not a phenomenal number. It's helpful, every little bit helps. But to anyone who might think that he had massive savings, in terms of the biggest picture, bigger picture, it's really not a phenomenon. But we were fortunate in being able to realize it. And last, with respect to the audit that Mr. Sokolovick asked about, I'll reiterate what I said at the Finance Meeting. When the audit is complete, I would be interested in maybe having the auditors come down and give a presentation on what they did, how they did it, and what they found, so that people can see that, you know, our internal controls are actually very, very strong. And that's proven by the fact that we've never had a qualified opinion from an auditor before. So I'd just like to start bringing that out to the public and letting them see the amount of work that goes into making sure our finances are high and tight, so to speak. So on that note, I am going to seek a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2021 budget based on the presentation given by the CFO. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some more.
Moved by Mr. Ellingsworth, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Sokolovick? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we have adopted 2021 budget. Second item on the agenda is discussion of possible action on separating in-person and remote learning in grades pre-K through 8. Initially, it was thought there might be some action desired to be taken. Oh, thank you, Ms. Segal and Ms. Maurer. You're free to go now. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Okay. It was initially thought there might be some action that Superintendent wanted us to take. At this point, I think he's kind of eased off of that, and at this point, just wants to have kind of a brief preliminary discussion about this. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Testani now.
Thank you, Mr. Weldon. Yeah, you know, there was some early panic, I think, and a lot of anxiety at the beginning of the school year as we started with this live streaming of classes by trying to teach, you know, 55% roughly of our students are in-person, if you look district-wide. It varies by building, but overall, it's pretty consistent. We have a few schools that are at a higher percentage, some that are a little bit lower, but overall, we have about 55% in-person as of yesterday, 45% that are strictly remote. It was presenting some challenges, particularly at our primary grades. However, we've been working extremely closely. Dr. Jenkins today actually made a phenomenal presentation to the leadership team at our Admin Council meeting prior to this. We're trying to provide additional support, professional development for teachers that may be struggling with the demands of instructing remote and in-person learners throughout the course of the day. I went and visited some schools again today. I think teachers are feeling more comfortable. One teacher in particular made the comment to me that I'm glad we didn't quit a couple of weeks ago, because that's all we would have known. Every day, we're getting better. It's challenging, it's like a new job. When they started the school year, we did have some technological issues with Microsoft Teams, just like every other school district with the platforms they utilize, but those have been worked out. Our academic support team is on call. They're helping teachers, they're helping families. So I think at this time, we've kind of just pumped the brakes on some of the discussions that we were having. We want to give it more time to develop, we want to provide additional support. We're identifying teachers in our school buildings that are doing a good job with this, and being able to have them support their colleagues is going to be important. We, in the next couple of weeks, we do have about four hours of professional development time after school and a school improvement day, combination back-to-back weeks. So this is really going to be a time that we can provide additional support and resources for the teachers that may be having a more difficult time. Technology is something that is getting the hands of all our students. We're receiving technology, new technology, every week. Our IT department was flooded with new devices. We're getting them now at a more manageable rate. We're not getting flooded with thousands of devices all at once. So I think now we've caught our breath, we've got our feet under us, and we're able to maintain some consistency in what we're able to do to support our staff. So right now, I'd like to pump the brakes on this. We do want to start prepping for the possibility of whatever the winter months will bring us. I think that that's something that we need our principals, we need our administrative team to work with their staffs at the building level to make sure that everybody is prepared, students and staff, if we have any significant time that we may be out of the classroom for any particular reason related to COVID-19. And also utilizing these resources that we have now for the possibility of snow days and being able to go remote when there isn't climate weather without having to lose a day of instruction that we need to make up later on. So we're preparing for a lot of different scenarios, but I think we feel a lot better where we're at today than we were initially when this topic was raised a couple of weeks ago. The executive directors have been really working with their principals to support the needs of the building administration, because it trickles down. You know, that's something we talked about today, is that, you know, if principals and administrators are feeling overwhelmed, it trickles down to the staff. But I think everybody's got a good handle. The buildings that I visited in the last few days are much different than they were a couple of weeks ago. So I think we're moving in a positive direction. I think we're not quite where we need to be, but we're getting there a little bit every day.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to point out that at the end of the day tomorrow, it will have been four weeks. We've completed four weeks of being open this way. And it's, there's been some stumbles along the way, but all in all, I think it's been very successful, and I want to congratulate all of the staff on all the hard work they've done. Like you said, Mr. Testani, it's like starting a new job. And there's a lot of stumbling blocks and a lot of relearning how you have to do things. And I think everyone has risen to the challenge and stood and delivered. And now here we are, about to complete the first month. Doesn't mean we're totally out of the water, but I think we're in as good a place as we could expect to be at this point. I see Mr. Sokolovick has his hand up, so I'll go to him for the first question, then I'll go down the line. Mr. Sokolovick?
Nice, a question and a few comments. No, basically just comments. As an end user of the product, as a parent of the public schools, I've actually, we've actually consumed both sides of this product. When Park City Magnet closed because of a case, we've had in-person for two weeks and have remote for two weeks. And they're doing a bang-up job. I mean, these teachers are phenomenal. When my son shifted to the, for the period, for the business learning, I put up his teams to check on his work, make sure he's doing his assignments, and I left it open. And I'm seeing at 12 o'clock at night, sometimes 1 o'clock in the morning, the teachers are returning assignments and they're grading papers. I mean, our staff is phenomenal. I'm most, I'm very most impressed. And a lot of these things need to be highlighted. Oftentimes, the things that get legs... a lot of these things need to be highlighted. Oftentimes, the things that get legs and team on the, on Facebook are the complaints. The squeaky wheels are always the loudest. I mean, if we hear one or two, nobody reaches out and tells the board of ed, y'all doing okay. But the majority, I, I've seen maybe thirty-six or seven people on Facebook complaining about distance learning. And we've got about 9,000 people learning distantly. Now, of course, we've got to solve all the small problems as they come up, but for the most part, great job, bang-up job. Thank you, staff. Thank you, admin, and everybody else. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you want me to just give a little brief COVID-19 update um while we're meeting. I know we did that in, in prior.
Sure.
But if anybody has any other questions regarding the, the schedule component.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't we stick to that first and then we'll wrap it up with an update. Uh, Mr. Ellingworth, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, no, just, just a couple of comments. And, you know, because he, you know, I, I, I have heard some um concerns and um, and, you know, I agree with everything that, that has been said. But we also have to realize, and I want, and I know the superintendent's gonna end his staff, he'll keep a eye on it, but you know, as teachers are doing a great job, phenomenal job in coping with what this task that's difficult. Um, it's not the same teaching thirty students in a class, but now they're teaching students in class and at the same time, students at home with a lot of obstacles and challenges. It's not the same. And I don't, I, I, what I fear about is our teachers burning out, et cetera. And I know the superintendent shares that same um, that same feeling as well. And that's why he looked into this. And I'm glad that um, you know, things are getting better. I, I, I don't doubt it. But I think it's still something that we may need to look at and keep looking at it and tweaking things if, if, if need be. Uh, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Skolovic and he's, and um, what he said, but I, I think he also, I, I think, you know, when Park City Magnet, that whole class went virtual. It wasn't like only half was being, you know, it's different. It was being all virtually, not versus I'm teaching some live and I'm teaching some virtual. There's a lot of challenges. Um, you know, and I know in the younger, younger grades from K to three, it's gotta, it's gotta even be more of a challenge in how many of those kids can really stay on a computer for four, five, six hours. So it's something that I just ask the superintendent to keep looking into and um, and just, you know, working with the teachers' union and, 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 and all the other unions to make sure that we're, we're good and, and everybody's okay. And if there are any, if there are any concerns, that we look at those and address those immediately. Thank you, superintendent.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Ellingworth, great point. We, we're trying to provide more guidance to the primary grade teachers to break up the day differently. So it doesn't become, as you mentioned, a five or six-hour day that it's chunked. Um, and provide scheduling for uh the remote folks to take their breaks as well during the course of the day. So then they can get back on. So um, your, your point and, and the concerns are, are definitely heard. And um, we're trying to address those as we tweak, um, you know, how we're navigating this, uh, this new start to the school year. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
No question.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Benahan, any questions?
No question, but I agree with Mr. Hernance. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. So on that note, um, I guess we'll segue into a brief COVID update. Mr. Testani, he offered to give it. So.
Yeah.
Talk about that.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I know there's a uh committee meeting that's scheduled for after this. I don't want to take, cut into that time. So to Mr. Skolovic uh's point, um, as of yesterday, we have little over 10,500 students that are attending regularly in-person and about 8,800 or so um that are doing remote. Um, that's, that's our current numbers. We asked parents to commit to the in-person um by yesterday, and that commitment for in-person would go through um the December break. Uh, then parents could decide again if they want to come back in person. At any time, parents can opt for a remote experience if they feel that it's uh something that they, they feel more comfortable with, that, that is an option at any time. Uh, principals will have discretion um as well. If, if the, the role wants to be reversed, we've given them that option, especially for our students of our more vulnerable population. So we don't want to shut anyone out um that needs this, the additional support. I think that's important during this time. Um, we did launch since our last meeting. I will share my screen with um everyone briefly. Um, share the screen quickly. Um, as you can see, we did launch here our, our dashboard, similar to what you'll see for many colleges and universities. Um, it just gives, we update it every morning at 9:00 AM. It gives our in-person student learners for the day, um, where we've had uh the number of student confirmed positive cases of COVID-19 in our schools, number of staff, and how many uh locations have been impacted. So this is something that we've uh, we've added. We've also added here um our checklist. I don't know if you see the checklist.
You see it.
Yep. So this is something we, we added as well for all our families, all our staff members, just something to go through quickly every day. Um, make sure that everybody stays safe. Um, we don't want people coming to work if they have any of the symptoms here. Be cautious, stay home. The, the remote learning opportunity for students, this gives them, if they're not feeling well, um, the opportunity to stay connected in class, um, but also protect themselves and protect others. So it's important that we do that. Um, we've also um put a family guide in English and Spanish to distance learning. This was put together by some experts at Columbia University, so we wanted to share that as well. Just give everybody a quick look, some great things that we want to give to our parents and uh, and our staff to help support during this time. Um, you can all take a look at it. It's, it's been on our website now for a couple of weeks, but it's just, just some important information to help guide everybody through the process. Because, you know, uh, to, to some people's points, I get notified from a number of folks that, you know, that we're not providing information. We don't communicate enough. As you can see, um, if you go to our website, it's, it's very, very important that everybody, we're, we're as transparent as possible during the process. We want to give the, the resources to everyone. Um, we have our frequently asked questions. We have our district reopening plan on the website. Um, if you need um support, parents, students, or staff, uh, with teams, our academic support team helpline. We have our remote learning expectations, which are very clear. Um, so these are just some of the things that kind of dispel um a number of the things that sometimes parents or, 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 or community folks um don't take the time to go out and see what we've provided to um, to our, our community here. Uh, this is a difficult process for everybody. We want to make sure our families and our students and our staff get the support they need and the information that they need. Um, we put out information as soon as we can. We're, we're very deliberate in how we deliver the information when we're notified of a positive case. We have very specific protocols that we take in every situation. Um, decisions are made um in conjunction and collaboration with the Department of Public Health here in Bridgeport. Lisa Morrissey and her staff, Lizette Early on our end have been absolutely tremendous in their response, whether it's on Saturday or Sunday. Um, we've gone above and beyond in every situation to take cautionary steps to protect our students and our staff. Um, so if the recommendation is, is X, we do X, Y, and Z. Uh, we've gone way above then. And as you can see, uh, I think our mitigation strategies are very good. Um, we are releasing a letter uh tomorrow. I'll be sending one out to the community. Um, in all of our cases so far, doing the contact tracing through the Department of Public Health, there are no cases directly related to the reopening of school. Um, it seems that everything is tied to outside social activities. Um, after talking to many of my colleagues in the surrounding areas, and if you read the newspapers, uh, they're finding the same thing. These are tied to outside activities that people are engaging in. Um, in, in 90% or plus. Do we know for 100% certainty? No. But for, for the most part, we are, are pretty certain that these are all um being traced back to outside of, of school, um, and not to the reopening of school. So I, I think everyone's done a great job in trying to maintain a healthy and safe environment in our school buildings.
Uh, I, I think it's worth noting when you, you mentioned the protocols that get followed when there's a, a case that's been discovered. There's, there's nothing that's cookie cutter. Each case is treated as an individualized incident, and the actions taken are based on what's best for this particular case or this particular building. It's not to shut it all down. It's what's good for this location and this group of people.
Correct. I think it's important for people to understand that um, the way the, we, we've learned a lot in this country, in this world, and here in Bridgeport Public Schools and Bridgeport Community on this disease, uh, this virus over the last seven months. Uh, you know, a family member in a, in a household may test positive. Um, the student or the, the staff member that reports to, to our buildings is negative. Um, we will quarantine those individuals for 14 days regardless because they live in that home. But that doesn't mean the last time they were in, if they were negative, they were negative. You know, people are having a hard time understanding that you cannot get the coronavirus from someone who is negative, regardless if they were in contact with somebody positive. They have to be positive in order to pass the, the virus to someone else. Um, being in the same building with somebody that, that you may have walked by is not going to, you know, give you the coronavirus. Um, being in a room that that person was in, um, you know, an hour before you were in there does not give you the coronavirus. So I think it's important that people understand that some of the information that they may have gotten back in April and May is not the, the information that is being provided now. So um, we're trying to pro- provide good information. It's hard when you have to combat some of, as Mr. Skolovic, Skolovic mentioned, the squeaky wheels that are pretty loud. But it makes our job a lot harder. Um, and it doesn't do our kids and our families any good.
Um, out of idle curiosity, I'm sure a lot of people have wondered it. You know, like I said, we're rounding out the first month. And in your observation, uh, you know, people were concerned about kids' ability to keep a mask on and would this just be completely impossible to, to enforce and maintain? And do you have any insight into um how successful we are in that regard? Is it hit or miss? And if you don't know, that's okay.
Extremely successful. Um, and that comes from teachers, that comes from administrators, and that comes from personal observations. The kids, as I said prior to us opening, when people were saying, there's no way our kids can do this. Our, our kids are, are as good or better than any other kid in the state of Connecticut. They, they come to school, they wear the mask. We've had a couple of small incidents with students riding the bus. Um, these are special needs students. And um, we're working with those families to try to help. But these are, these again are severe cases. And um, this, this, it's not the kids' fault. It's not the child's fault. But again, these are less than a handful. I mean, they're, they're just a couple. And um, and we're, we're okay. I mean, we're doing really well. Our kids are really good. They understand the importance. They follow the rules. Um, you know, again, I, we can't take all the credit. Their, their parents have done a great job in preparing them to come to school as well. So.
And, and that's my next question is, you know, but the first part of it was kids being able to keep the mask on and all that. But there was also concern about would a lot of kids just show up without a mask? And is that happening a lot where we have to provide them a mask because they showed up at the door without one or?
That, that's a good question. Um, from what I've visibly observed, it seems kids are coming with their own masks for the most part. Um, we do have the masks available. Obviously, um, we had, depending on the size of the school before the year started, anywhere between 20,000 to 30,000 masks delivered to each school, to each principal. Um, so we haven't done an inventory yet. None of the principals, to my knowledge, have asked for any more masks at this point. Uh, we've made our second delivery of the small bottles, the 16.9 ounce bottles of hand sanitizer because some of the schools were running low there. Uh, we're doing okay on, on most of our PPE. So um, I think we did a great job in, in getting enough resources and PPE. Think again, people don't realize the cost of, of PPE. When you look at a, a district that has between staff and students, anywhere to, you know, 13,000 to 14,000 individuals a day. Um, so, you know, that, that money that we receive that from the CARES money and coronavirus relief funds, uh, you know, they, they, they go quickly when you're spending, um, you know, in this market for PPE.
Yeah. All right. I'll just go around the, the room and see if anyone else has any questions. Mr. Ellingworth, do you have any questions? Mr. Testani?
Yeah, you know, it's not, no, it's not a question. Uh, just really, uh, superintendent, you and your administration has done a phenomenal job in being proactive. And it's something that I was, uh, you know, had my concerns going into this is how are we going to maintain and be proactive and not reactive? And um, uh, you have been more than proactive um in the situations. I can say what we say, but you know what they say, right? The numbers speak louder than words. The numbers are right there on the website for people to see. Our schools are safe. They are being safe. We had a couple incidents, but they all isolated. There has not been any spreads, any multiples cases in schools. That is something that we, that you have to look at. And um, people in, you know, the, the community has to understand every, every, like um, like the chair said, every situation is differently. And you can't just treat it all the same. And I know, I know I've heard concerns from staff and one principal about, you know, the, the, the communication piece. I know that's getting better. Uh, people starting to understand why we make the decisions that we do when it comes to these cases. And that's all because of that tracing and the collaboration with the health department is what dictates what the best um scenario is for that particular incident. So again, thank you to you, uh, superintendent, and to your administration. But not only that, but to everyone in the school building because you know what? We're all keeping each other safe, our students, our staff, our principals, everyone, and our, and our, our parents, our families, and, and working together and making this work. So my appreciation to all of that.
Thank you. And it's, it's important to mention, you're right. There's, this is, this is everyone. I was in a building today, you know, I'll say over at Blackman School, I watched the head custodian going into the bathroom, making sure no one was in there. Um, you know, doing his sanitizing routine that he does several times through the day. Um, there's a lot of things happening that people don't see, but people are, you know, our custodial staff is, is diligent about maintaining um the sanitation, the sanitizing of the building. So I think it's important to recognize all the folks that have, have really done a great job with this. Um, it's not always visible. You know, you don't see sanitizing. Um, but, but they are doing it. And um, I think it's important to notice that uh, you know, people are feeling more confident. I think it's important to notice that, uh, you know, people are feeling more confident, um, day by day here in, in, in our schools.
Okay. And just kind of a, put things in kind of a bit of perspective. We've had, correct me if I'm wrong, seven identified cases throughout the district?
No, we are at today are as of recent, um, we are at sixteen confirmed um, cases. Um, that's, that's as of, um, our latest numbers.
Okay.
That's, that's district-wide, uh, twelve students and four staff. I will say though, we've only had, um, two folks that have been, uh, and actually three folks that have had symptoms. The rest have all been asymptomatic. So no, knock on wood, you know, nothing that is extremely severe that would require anyone to, um, to be hospitalized or anything of that nature.
Okay. And my, my point in saying that is that equates to less than one one hundredth of one percent of the total combined school and teacher population, school and staff population that are in buildings. It's sixteen people and they are individuals and I recognize that. But when you look at the bigger picture, it's a really, really, really small number of the total population of Bridgeport Public Schools. So kudos to the staff that's keeping the numbers. So, it is skill. Um, Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
I, I just want to say that I'm really grateful that Mr. Testani and the staff have been doing a really good job at, um, making sure we get ahead of the story before anyone else does. I know there's a lot of confusion online when it comes to information being, um, put, put out. But I've been following along with all the emails and all the updates. So I think that as we continue to stay ahead of the story, it keeps the parents informed and keeps the chaos down. Um, we can't, we can't really, uh, help what they put, what people put on social media, but I do think we're doing a good job as far as making sure we keep the parents informed and our staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robbie. I appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Benahan, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a concern. Mr. Testani, very obviously, and with all your respect, that when you show to one of the buildings of Bridgeport School, of course, everything will be running, everything's gonna be okay. But like always, I told you, you go surprised and you visit one of the school without not showing, you know, not because you want to do, uh, be a bad person. You'll be surprised because I already call you and I already show you, you know, some things when you go to school, things is not very well, is not not doing the job the way it's supposed to be. It's very obviously when you say I'm gonna go to school, everything look nice. But that's my opinion. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Well, I, I do want to say that all the schools that I visited are unannounced. Um, I, when I get some time during the day that there's no meetings or anything, I just get in the car, like I did today. I popped in, the principal was behind closed doors. I didn't want to interrupt. Um, I, I just took a walk through and popped into classroom. So I, I mean, th- these are un, unannounced visits. I, I don't do any announced visits because I'm not directly there to, um, to evaluate them as if I was an executive director who's going to do a, uh, a walkthrough as part of the, the administrator's evaluation. So, um, I, I know they're not perfect, Mr. Benahan. There are things that, you know, always, you know, need to be addressed. But, um, I think, you know, when you look at the, the circumstances, uh, this is, uh, this is difficult and people have risen to the occasion.
And to reiterate, the numbers speak for themselves as a result of all the work. Less than one hundred, less than one one hundredth of one percent of the total population has been affected. And that's because people are doing a lot of work, people are doing their part and they're, they're playing along. They're, they're, they're playing well with each other, so to speak. Everybody's doing what they should do, the way they should do it and being cooperative. And it's showing, it's showing.
And we, we don't hide any numbers. We don't hide any cases. There's no, to anybody's, you know, I know that people think or want to believe, I, I got nothing to gain and a lot to lose if we don't report a case.
I, I think you're, if not legally, at the very least, ethically obligated to keep it straight and report everything as it is, good, bad or otherwise.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sikolovik?
Uh, yes, uh, I gotta ask a question, but I, first I want to go over the premise of my question. If it's, if, if the premise is wrong, please correct me, Mr. Testani. Last time I looked at the dashboard, there was nine locations impacted with nine, with nine students. Is that correct? And it was updated to twelve with ten. So it appears to me that there is one building that had three cases and that seems to be an outlier.
Yeah.
And see if there's anything different about that school that actually made three students, that not, that made, that caused this anomaly.
Yeah, this, it was siblings, uh, siblings in, in that case, yes.
Okay. So that makes, that makes, that makes sense. So it didn't spread throughout the, whatever that school is.
Correct, correct. It was siblings that, um, that had, and then a person, a, a child that had, uh, has direct contact with them. So that's one of the things that's important. It's, it's sometimes you find out later with the younger kids, it's easier with the older kids, high school kids. You know, you want to look to their friends, you know, who they would be more comfortable with in close proximity to take their mask off with, who they may have a sleepover with or. Um, so in this case, you have siblings and then also, you know, somebody that may be a family member or a close friend that, um, and that, that's like you said, it's an, it's an outlier.
Okay. And it makes contact tracing in this particular school a little bit more difficult, I suppose?
A, a little bit, yeah. Um, but overall, um, I think the, the health department, as long as people realize when you get a phone call from one of the nurses, just to be forthcoming. Um, because there's, there's no blame game here. No one's going to get in trouble. It's just a, so we get all the, the right information so we can make good decisions.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd say that about does it. Uh, I'd seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Sikolovik. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Benahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Time is noted as being five fifty-nine PM. If I don't speak to any of you beforehand, have a good weekend.
Thank you.